and his actions and the patients who spoke out is told in an investigative podcast, Exposed, cover up at Columbia University, a reporting project of ProPublica and the podcast company Wondery. And he spoke to podcast host Laura Beal about it back in 2023 when the story broke.
His career was basically a 25-year crime spree. He was probably the most prolific sexual predator in New York history.
And Laura Beal is back with an update to the story, including this important settlement. Laura, welcome back.
Thank you, Scott.
So for those just learning about this story, we're going to play a little from your podcast. It's a section about patient Lori Caniuk. She was a patient of Dr. Robert Hadden talking about what happened in his office back in 2012. So we're going to hear a little of your voice as well as hers.
Dr. Robert Hadden finally stepped into the room, wearing his crisp white coat with his glasses and prim gray beard. He's a skinny Santa Claus, like a grandpa. He jumped right in with his usual chit chat.
Hey, how's it going? How's the baby? Blah, blah, blah. Wow, you look good. You lost a lot of weight. I'm a dancer. I'm at my fighting weight again. Like, we don't mess around kind of thing.
A nurse was with him. He performed a breast exam and a pelvic exam.
You're looking good. Everything's good. Nurse leaves.
Dr. Hadden started to follow the nurse out, but stopped.
Oh, I forgot. Your hemorrhoids. Oh, and your stitches. I thought you just saw them.
They were in the examination room alone.
And that's when I knew this was not going to go very well.
Was not going to go very well. And as you tell the story, Laura, the doctor sexually assaulted this patient, her boyfriend called 911, and he was arrested. But Columbia let him go right back to work. What did you learn about the scale of his abuse?
He started abusing his patients perhaps almost immediately after he was hired at Columbia. From court records and from women we talked to, he started there in the early 90s and there were patients from even back then.
Eventually, one patient with a high-profile name, Evelyn Yang, speaks out. She's the wife of Andrew Yang, who, of course, ran for president back in 2020. Why was that a pivotal moment here?
Evelyn did one thing that was very significant. She went public with her story. And when she did that, women started coming forward who realized that they too had been patients of Hadden.
Eventually, Robert Hadden was convicted. Now we have the settlement from Columbia University. What are the key details of this?
The key significance about this particular settlement is it now brings the number of known survivors to at least 1,000 women, and the payouts total around $1 billion. I think it's just the scale.
Mm-hmm. And Laura, before we start recording, you said there had been additional developments in the last two years?
Since our reporting came out, Columbia announced a lot of measures that they're finally doing. One of the most significant was that they agreed to notify all of Hadden's former patients that their former doctor was a sexual predator, which they had not done. They announced the start of an external investigation. Women are still hoping to get some answers. I've talked with some survivors. They still don't really trust the institution. They still don't feel like Columbia is being transparent. But we'll see what Columbia announces with this external investigation whenever they make that public.
As you're describing, it's clear a lot of these patients have a significant lack of trust in the university and its hospital. How do they think about the university and its management and how the management turned a blind eye for so long?
I don't know.
Welcome to our meeting for June 10, 2025. At this time, I'd like to welcome the Reverend
Rachel H. Vogado and invite her to come to the podium and to tell us about her church and lead us in prayer. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Greetings on behalf of Covenant Presbyterian Church. My name is Rachel Vogado, and I am grateful to serve as their pastor. Covenant is a vibrant PCUSA congregation in the greater Dyrly neighborhood, and we just finished day two of Vacation Bible School with over 50 children who have come from the church and preschool and community. And boy, are we having fun. Apart from supporting a number of ministries, support groups, and outreach programs here in Roanoke, the church is also grateful to support Covenant Presbyterian Preschool, which provides a joyful place for children age six months to five years old to learn and grow in a safe and loving environment. We are currently enrolling for the next year, so if you know anyone looking for a great preschool, come find us. One of the things that we are exploring right now is what it truly means to be a neighborhood church and how we can bridge community partners, neighbors, strangers, and friends together to better ourselves, our neighborhood, and our world. Each and every day, we seek to live out our mission statement: Loving God, loving people, making disciples. I thank you for the privilege to come before you today to provide the invocation, and I give thanks and I ask blessings on your time of leadership as you seek to build and strengthen Roanoke and to work for its people. Would you pray with me? Good and gracious God, we gather today as stewards of this city entrusted with the care, well-being, and future of our community. As we begin this meeting, we are grateful to have a moment to pause to acknowledge a power greater than ourselves, one that calls us to serve with humility, wisdom, and compassion. We give thanks for these elected leaders, for their willingness and ability to serve the citizens of Roanoke for such a time as this. We thank you for the gifts you have given to each of them: Gifts of Leadership, Active Listening, Patience, and Discernment, Direction, and Tolerance. Strengthen and inspire them in their work of fostering resilience and uplifting this community. Grant each person here clarity of thought, strength of conviction, and the courage to do what is just and right. May their deliberations be guided by fairness, open hearts, and respect for the diverse voices they represent. As they serve, the people of Roanoke, guide them to respond to your creativity and wisdom. Where there is despair, help us to see potential for hope. Where there is war, help us to see the potential for peace. Where there is prejudice, help us to see the potential for fellowship. Where there is oppression, help us see the potential for justice. Where there is brokenness, help us see the potential for wholeness. We lift up and pray for the marginalized in the community, those without homes, food, support, safety, or hope. Help us all to seek the common good above personal interest, to listen more than we speak, and to remember the dignity of all who call this city home. Help us to be a people who care for the lost and the least, those who are often overlooked or left behind, or who do not have a voice or a seat at the table. Bless this gathering with peace and purpose. And may we remember that the actions taken today have a direct impact on the people of this community. May the work of this body live out the values of justice, freedom, and peace for all. May the actions taken today sow seeds of unity, progress, and hope. And may all of our words and actions reflect the love you have for this world, for this beautiful creation, and all of its people. It is in your holy and loving name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon. Welcome to our meeting for June 10, 2025. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 2:00 p.m. Public hearings are held at 6:00 p.m. on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from the schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Friday at 7:00 p.m. and on Sunday from 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokcountyva.gov. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend board meetings should contact the clerk of the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Please turn off all cell phones or place them on silent. Item A, Opening Ceremonies. Number one, Remote Participation Approval. I was notified in writing by Chairman Radford that he would be unable to physically attend this meeting because he is out of the Commonwealth of Virginia, spending time with family in Hatteras, North Carolina. He requested to participate in today's meeting by telephone. Pursuant to the board's policy for participation in meetings through electronic communication, which was adopted by the board on September 28, 2022, I notified him that his request complied with the board's policy and was approved. His request and my determination, along with a copy of the policy thereafter, shared with you by email. At this time, I invite Mr. Radford to again state his request for the record and to ensure that all members of the board can hear him. Mr. Radford?
Good afternoon, everybody. Mr. Vice Chair, fellow board members. I today am in Hatteras, North Carolina, spending time with family and unable to join you in person. I'm in a private room that is conducive to allow me to participate in today's meeting by telephone. If the board goes into closed session today, no third party will be able to hear or otherwise observe the closed meeting.
Thank you. Anyone who was unable to hear Mr. Radford's voice, please so indicate by raising your hand. The board must now vote to one, ratify my decision that Mr. Radford's request is in accordance with the board's policy on remote participation, and two, confirm that Mr. Radford's voice can be heard by all persons at this location. All in agreement, please state yes when the clerk calls your name. Will the clerk please call the roll, vote excluding Mr. Radford?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes, thank you. It is confirmed that Mr. Radford's request is in accordance with our policy and that all can hear him. His remote participation is approved. Item two, roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Mr. North?
Here. Item B, Request to Postpone, Add to, or Change Order of Agenda Items. Are there any requests to postpone, add to, or change order of agenda items, fellow board members?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kaywood?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lubeck?
No changes, sir.
Thank you. Item C, Proclamations, Resolutions, Recognitions, and Awards. At this time, we'd like to, item one, Resolution congratulating Catherine Haw, resident of the Hollins Magisterial District, for winning the Scott Robertson Memorial Tournament. Catherine, please come forward and meet me at the podium. Will the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution congratulating Catherine Haw for winning the Scott Robertson Memorial Tournament. Whereas athletic accomplishments are a vital part of student development, fostering discipline, excellence, and character both on and off the field of competition. And whereas this year, student athlete Catherine Haw made history by becoming the first local golfer to win the prestigious Scott Robertson Memorial Tournament since 1992. Whereas Catherine also became the first individual in Virginia High School League, VHSL, history to capture both the Class IV coed state title and the girls' open state championship in the same season, demonstrating her extraordinary talent and determination. And whereas on October 14, 2024, Catherine secured the VHSL Class IV Individual State Title at Heritage Oaks Golf Course with an impressive three-under-par round of 68, defeating the top 60 golfers in the state. Just two weeks later, she followed up with a three-under-round of 67, earning her third state championship title. And whereas her accolades include being named Rolex All-American, the Virginia State Golf Association's Junior Golfer of the Year for two consecutive years, and earning multiple state honors, all-state honors, as well as being featured in Virginia Golf Magazine. And whereas Catherine's talent and dedication earned her a spot on the prestigious United States Ping, P-I-N-G, Junior Solheim Cup Team, where she represented her country in international competition in southern Spain. And whereas, in addition to her athletic excellence, Catherine graduated as a distinguished scholar from both the Roanoke Valley Governor's School and Salem High School, and will continue her academic and athletic career at Vanderbilt University as a member of the NCAA varsity golf team. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County, Virginia does hereby extend its sincere congratulations to Catherine Haw for her exceptional achievements, unwavering dedication, and historic accomplishments in the sport of golf. Be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors extends its best wishes to Catherine and her future academic and athletic endeavors.
Thank you. At this time, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? There being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. This time, I welcome comments from anyone on the board.
I would just like to say, congratulations, Catherine. What an honor, what a great honor. And I especially love those pictures. Apparently, you've been doing this for a long time because I'm pretty sure that was maybe a long time ago for that initial picture. And it is precious. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Best of luck. Thank you.
Catherine, congratulations. Your athletic skills are impressive, but listening to the resolution, what truly impressed me was also proceeding through the governor's school. I know several friends of mine, me and my wife and their children, have gone through the governor's school, and it is very challenging. And somehow, you were able to balance both athletic skills and academics, and that's very impressive. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Catherine, congratulations. All I can say is, I really do want to learn to play golf. Can you teach me?
Of course.
That would be nice one day, but congratulations. What an honor.
Thank you.
You better hurry up because she's going to be going to Nashville, Tennessee, to Vanderbilt University in August.
Does that mean that I can come to Nashville and we can hit up the town?
A weekend trip, yeah.
I would like to go to, what is it, the Grand Old Opry?
Oh, yeah.
We could have a good time.
Nice, man.
Well, Catherine, this is quite an honor, and we're so glad we're able to recognize you today because you've been a resident of the Hollins District since before I ever got elected to the board. And we just recognize the discipline and the focus to attain such excellence. In fact, you've accomplished so much, we weren't able to put the last two or three events, I think, in the resolution because, you know, I turned around and I was reading about the newspaper. So we're sorry it doesn't contain everything, but it's a great accomplishment. Do you have any comments?
I just want to thank the Board of Supervisors and everyone to make this possible. And it's an incredible honor to have this resolution done. Obviously, me being here is a culmination of all the hard work, not just from me, but my parents and my coaches and everyone. So just a shout out and a thank you to all of them. And I'm really excited for Vanderbilt in the fall. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to, we'd like to get some pictures up in front of the board there, if that's okay. Amy?
Okay, let's take this one up to the board.
Thank you.
Come on up, folks. This is good. Thank you. We're proud of you. We'll hope to see you one day soon again and read about your successes in the SEC.
Thank you.
You're welcome. As we move on the agenda to item D, New Business, Resolution Authorizing the Use of Competitive Negotiation in the Procurement of Professional Services for the Redevelopment of the Hollins Library pursuant to the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002. Chair welcomes George Assett, Capital Projects Administrator. George?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In FY 2023, the board approved funding for programming and conceptual design for the replacement or redevelopment of the Hollins Library. Last summer, the consultant provided the final design options and associated cost estimates. In October, we received an unsolicited PPEA proposal for the redevelopment of the Hollins Library. In December, the board accepted the unsolicited proposal for review and solicited competing proposals pursuant to the PPEA guidelines. One competing proposal was submitted. A selection committee received presentations from the two proposers, and we are now ready to proceed with selecting the PPEA contractor and negotiating an interim agreement to provide professional services for design and construction document development. The county's PPEA guidelines state that the Board of Supervisors will determine at the initial stage review the procedures to be used in procuring services for the completion of the project. To the extent that the proposals largely involve professional services, it would be proper and lawful to use procurement, to use the procurement process of competitive negotiations for professional services as set forth in the Code of Virginia. We're requesting that the board approve the attached resolution authorizing the use of competitive negotiation to procure professional services for the redevelopment of Hollins Library pursuant to the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002.
Thank you, George. Are there any questions for Mr. Assett? Any motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Moving on to item E, First Reading of Ordinances. Number one, Ordinance Authorizing Employee Bonuses totaling $1,82,191 funded from reimbursements from the Commonwealth of Virginia and amending the general fund fiscal year '25 and '26 operating revenues and expenditures. Chair welcomes Richard L. Kaywood, County Administrator, for the first reading and request for second reading. Mr. Kaywood?
All right. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as, you know, we discussed during the process of developing our budget this year, that we were going to continue to look for opportunities to increase what we were able to do for employee compensation. So the ordinance before you today is going to make some changes to both the FY '25 budget and the proposed FY '26 budget to allow us to do a 1.5% bonus for employees. And I should point out that in the Commonwealth's budget, they made provision for bonuses for the state-supported local employees, which includes, in our case, many of our constitutional officer employees. And this action would allow us to extend this to all county employees. So the total cost is roughly $1 million, of which about $200,000 is coming from the Commonwealth to support their employees.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Kaywood on the board?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance and schedule a second reading for June 24, 2025?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Item E2, Ordinance Appropriating New Funds in the Amount of $1,514,496 to Roanoke County Public Schools for a Bonus from the Commonwealth of Virginia and Authorizing a Transfer of Funds Between Categories Within the Roanoke County Public Schools Fiscal Year '24-25 Budget. Chair recognizes and welcomes Susan Peterson, Director of Finance, Roanoke County Public Schools. Welcome, Susan.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. At the May 12, 2025, School Board Budget Work Session, I presented two key items requiring amendments to the school board's current budget. These amendments were adopted on May 22 at the regular work session, at the regular meeting. The first item, with the adoption of the state budget, the Roanoke County Public Schools received an allocation of $1,514,496 designated for employee bonuses. These funds have already been received by the school board, and we are requesting appropriation of these funds in the appropriate categories, as is outlined in the ordinance, in order to issue payments to our employees on June 30. The second item, we continue to emphasize the importance of maintaining adequate health insurance reserves. To support this, we request approval of another $1 million transfer from the instructional category to the noncategorical category. This reallocation will help strengthen our ability to meet projected health claims and help ensure a sufficient carrier balance into the new fiscal year. We appreciate your continued support, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Peterson? If not, I understand, Mr. Mahoney, you may have a motion to amend the draft ordinance.
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. I would ask the board to agree to an amendment of the draft ordinance to amend paragraph one of the enactment section of this ordinance. That section would read that the board approves the transfer of $1 million from the instructional category to the noncategorical spending category. Then my amendment would then add to that, quote, "to the health insurance fund," close quote.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Chairman, if it be appropriate, I would move to approve the first reading of the amended ordinance and to schedule the second reading on June 24.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Item three, Ordinance Accepting and Appropriating $328,811 from the Virginia Department of
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Item E2, Ordinance Appropriating New Funds in Amount of $1,514,496 to Roanoke County Public Schools for a Bonus from the Commonwealth of Virginia and Authorizing a Transfer of Funds Between Categories Within the Roanoke County Public Schools Fiscal Year '24-25 Budget. Chair recognizes and welcomes Susan Peterson, Director of Finance, Roanoke County Public Schools. Welcome, Susan. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. At the May 12, 2025 School Board Budget Work Session, I presented two key items requiring amendments to the school board's current budget. These amendments were adopted on May 22 at the regular work session, at the regular meeting. The first item, with the adoption of the state budget, the Roanoke County Public Schools received an allocation of $1,514,496 designated for employee bonuses. These funds have already been received by the school board, and we are requesting appropriation of these funds in the appropriate categories, as is outlined in the ordinance, in order to issue payments to our employees on June 30. The second item, we continue to emphasize the importance of maintaining adequate health insurance reserves. To support this, we request approval of another $1 million transfer from the instructional category to the noncategorical category. This reallocation will help strengthen our ability to meet projected health claims and help ensure a sufficient carrier balance into the new fiscal year. We appreciate your continued support, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Peterson? If not, I understand, Mr. Mahoney, you may have a motion to amend the draft ordinance.
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. I would ask the board to agree to an amendment of the draft ordinance to amend Paragraph 1 of the enactment section of this ordinance. That section would read that the board approves the transfer of $1 million from the instructional category to the noncategorical spending category. Then my amendment would then add to that, quote, "to the health insurance fund," close quote.
I do.
And then, Mr. Chairman, if it be appropriate, I would move to approve the first reading of the amended ordinance and to schedule the second reading on June 24.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Thank you, Susan. Thank you so much.
Item 3, Ordinance Accepting and Appropriating $328,811 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice for Use by the Roanoke County Police Department for Eight School Resource Officers. Chair welcomes Mark Tuck, Assistant Chief of Police, for the first reading and request for a second reading.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So the first ordinance I have before you today is the request for $328,811 from the Department of Criminal Justice Services to be used towards the part-time school resource program. This is the third year of this grant. Currently, we have two of eight positions filled, actively recruiting for others, if anyone is interested, and we keep pushing that forward to see if we can get all of these positions filled. We have one that starts actually the academy at the end of the month, so that will give us three of the eight under this grant. That person starts in late June, and of course, it's a six-month academy with some field training afterward. So it's going to take some time, but that person will come online. Possibility of one or two more that we may have our sights set on, and hopefully that comes through. We don't want to count on our own retirements, but that may be the case, and we don't ever want to lose a full-time employee to gain a part-timer, but we would love to have them as these part-time SROs. The grant itself, again, for 32811, requires a 187871 local match.
Okay, thank you. Chief Tuck, any questions?
I have one quick question. I am just curious, since we don't have those positions filled yet, I guess there's not a time limit on these monies, that they'll be sitting waiting for us to use them?
Yes. So if we happen to get the full allotment, it is there for us.
Perfect. So we only use the amount of money that we need?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. Understood.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm good.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance and schedule the second reading for June 24, 2025?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? There being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Item 4, Ordinance Accepting and Appropriating $322,675 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services for Use by Roanoke County Police Department for Eight School Resource Officers. Again, Chair recognizes Mark Tuck, Assistant Chief of Police, for the first reading and request for a second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So this is the request for the 322675 with a matching grant of 184280. This is the fourth year of this grant, and we have a full allotment of those part-time SROs. 2023, we started with three. Now this one is full and has been for a little while. You know, it's one of those things that without the board's support, county administration stepping behind us, this would never have happened. So for one, we are grateful in that. There may be a possibility that this could be extended. We're still waiting on some DCJS guidance on that. But again, it would be 322675 with the local match of 184280.
Thank you, Chief Tuck. You all have done a good job working on that for the schools and for the county. We appreciate that. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance and schedule a second reading for June 24, 2025?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
I just want to compliment Assistant Chief. I think this is really good news. We're providing school resource officers for all of our elementary schools. At least now we have the money. As you said with the previous ordinance, now the challenge is to try to recruit certified and qualified individuals to meet that goal. But I just think with these two ordinances, this is just, this is great news.
Very good.
I want to give a lot of compliments to you, sir, and to staff to successfully achieve these grants. Thank you.
I think it's a team effort, and we appreciate that.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Thank you, Chief. Moving on to Item 5, Ordinance to Appropriate Funds in the Amount of $48,272 from the Commonwealth of Virginia for the County of Roanoke Clerk of the Circuit Court for Fiscal Year 2026 and Adding One Deputy Clerk Position to the Compensation and Pay Plan. Place Chair recognizes Michael Gallagher, Clerk of the Circuit Court, for the first reading and request for a second reading. Mr. Gallagher?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and the members of the board. I'm here today to, for the ordinance to appropriate funds in the amount of $48,272 from the Commonwealth of Virginia for the County of Roanoke Clerk of the Circuit Court for Fiscal Year 2026 and Adding One Deputy Clerk Position to the Compensation and Pay Plan. A few years ago, the General Assembly passed House Bill 2723, Incentive Bill 1466, which is the Sealing Bill, Chapter 23.2, Sealing Criminal History Record Information and Court Records. This is going to, and then this past year, the Journal Assembly, with the budget bill, it was approved for 117 deputy clerks to be added to clerks' offices throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. What this is going to do is, the effects of the Circuit Court clerks' offices is going to add new workflow for sealing eligible records and processing petitions. It is going to be data reporting obligations to state agencies and commissions, integration work with statewide portal and background check infrastructure, and staff training and planned public outreach to prepare communities and legal teams. So for this, I'm just requesting further to be a second reading for this to be heard before you all.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Is there any questions for Mr. Gallagher?
Michael, I've been, we've been following the process as it goes through the General Assembly. Do you have a guess, an estimate, as to the number of records? Because I'm just thinking, of all the criminal records that are in your office, going back to the beginning of time, I could see there's a significant number, but have you had a chance to really look at and get an estimate of the numbers out there?
So last week, we had our clerks' conference with the Office of the Executive Secretary, and they informed us that they, this has been amended a little bit. That's why there's been so much of a delay. So there is now a back date of criminal records from January of 1986 to present day. So I'm very thankful that it's not 1838 to present day, because regarding Mr. Mahoney's question, I would have no clue how many records that would be. But the, what the records are that I've been informed of is you're looking at, expands eligibility to automatically seal and petition to seal many nonconvictions, misdemeanors, and select felonies, Class V, Class VI, and felony larcenies. So even from 1986 to present day, you're looking at a substantial amount of charges that are going to have to be gone through and sealed from public view.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? There being none, is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance and schedule a second reading for June 24, 2025?
I should help, Chris.
Oh, go ahead.
You?
Is there a motion?
I will move the approval of the ordinance to appropriate funds for the addition of an additional deputy clerk.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? There being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Thank you, Michael. Good to see you.
Thank you all.
Item F, Appointments. Any board members have an appointment that has not been given to the clerk and included in the board report for agenda item F? Is there a motion to approve the list of appointments set forth in the board report?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that. Any discussion? There being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Next is Item G, Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by one resolution in the
form or forms listed below. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Any board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion? Is there a motion to adopt all matters on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the, let's see.
Item G.
Are there eight items under our consent agenda under Item G?
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Item H, Citizens' Comments and Communications. Do we have any citizens' comments or communications?
No, sir.
Okay. With that said, I'll move on to Item I, Reports. Is there a motion to receive and file the reports that have been included with the agenda under Item I?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Is there a discussion on the motion? None? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Moving on to Item J, Reports and Inquiries of Board Members. Ms. Hooker?
So just a couple of items, really just to update, things that have been going on in the county and some events that have been attended by not just me, but by several board members. And the first is on June 2, Mr. Mahoney and I attended the Employee Retirement and Service Award Luncheon. And just a quick comment to say, what a great group of employees Roanoke County has. And it's really, it's impressive to see the number of employees that had such longevity of, you know, decades of experience. And, you know, some departments are, you know, it's difficult to retain because they're doing difficult work. So just a shout out to our employees, past and present, for your good work. The second thing is, yesterday I attended the VBR Brand Alignment Roundtable, and it was a good discussion. Talked about what we wanted to see happening in the Roanoke Valley for the foreseeable future, where we saw things going and how we wanted to be perceived from the outside, different communities. On May 31, I was invited by Mr. Sonny Shaw to go on their BAPS Walk, which is their charity, and it was quite a good turnout, a beautiful day, a lot of good people there. I believe Mr. Mahoney was there, Mr. Kaywood was there. It was a great turnout. On May 29, we had the 25th anniversary for the Roanoke Blacksburg Technology Council Awards, and considered their Tech Night, and it was a pleasure to be able to announce Novo Nemus. I think I said that right. Megan, say it for me. Novo Nem, Novo Nessus. I don't know why I have a hard time with that, but I do. Novo Nessus. And they won our Large Leading Tech Company of the Year. They tied with another company, but we were just especially proud of Novo Nessus. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Mahoney?
One item, Mr. Chairman. On June 3, Mr. North and I met with Roanoke County's representative, representatives on the Airport Commission, Gary Powers and Bill Gust. Mr. North and I have been having these sort of informal meetings every couple months, and that our Airport Commission members can inform us as to the activities of the Airport Commission, and also discussing with them some of the long-range plans that the Airport Commission has, not only expanding and extending the runways, but also doing some renovations at the terminal. And so we, the airport, the regional airport is, I think all of us know, very, very critical to, I think, the economic development survival of our region. And so we have added that over the last several years to our legislative program, and we'll continue to do that. With that, Mr. Chairman, nothing further.
Thank you. Ms. Shepherd?
I've only got one thing today. I want to bring up, first of all, just to make all the citizens, whether it's my magisterial district or one of the other ones, if there's something that any of us can help, even if it's Martha's district or Paul's, that someone wanted to reach out to me, or one of them, if they find something that they feel like needs to be addressed, that they reach out to us in person and let us know these items, because we obviously can't be everywhere all the time, and I think all of us want to see all the citizens happy all the time, and all of us are available to be reached at any point. But we all have an open policy to give us a call. We also have our constituent services, Josh, that is more than willing to help out and has helped several times this week, and I just want to make sure that all the citizens know all the avenues that they can use to make requests for things that they see going on in the county.
Thank you.
And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Very good message. Mr. Radford, do you have anything?
Yeah. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Mahoney. Having the airport extension in our legislative agenda is most important for future years to come, and I just pray that that gets the attention it needs, and I appreciate you guys attending the meeting and finding out a little bit more about that. Also, I too want to congratulate Catherine Ha. It is a big deal to win that Scott Robertson Memorial Tournament as a local person. So she's especially talented, and as a parent that had a daughter go to Vanderbilt, I know that she's going to enjoy that campus and that town. It's beautiful. I just don't like the seven-hour drive from Roanoke to Nashville. Other than that, congratulations, Catherine Ha. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Radford. This time, I want to share a few thoughts on a few subjects, and, you know, we did meet with our airport representatives, and unfortunately, the FAA does not support the runway extension at this time, but has agreed to an engineering study being conducted, and that's a big, big plus. Meanwhile, I'm talking to the executive airport director. He's looking for a grant maybe from the General Assembly to fund that, and I've asked him for that dollar figure so we can consider putting that in our legislative agenda, Mr. Lubeck, which you and I talked about earlier. Things take time, and I know I don't believe any of us will be on this board when that runway extension gets accomplished because of the huge price tag I imagine we're going to find out about. And you have to take your turn and wait on the federal list for 90% of the funds, but it's nevertheless important for us to keep that in focus going forward. On June 4, Roanoke County was recognized by VDOT and the Commonwealth Transportation Board Member for the Salem District, Dr. Ray Smoot, for the VDOT Locality of the Year, and Roanoke County will hear more about that at the next meeting. I want to especially congratulate Megan Cronice and her transportation team in this community development, in the Community Development Department for this recognition. Very, very important. And that's what I was trying to mention earlier when we met with Lily for the newspaper. That's the news. You've probably heard about it already. On June 5, I attended the Regional Partnership Event on Economic Development and heard from many site developers on how we can position ourselves in the Roanoke region, not just the county, for success. And some of the topics that were shared by these eight site developers from all over the country. Number one, everyone's concerned about the federal impact and the uncertainty which are slowing down some new projects across the country. Number two, federal incentives also have come into question, and that means less dollars flowing to the states. But nevertheless, many states like Virginia have stepped up, and they know how important being number one to do business with, which the Commonwealth has been recognized for, and continues to support economic development. Now, here's one that ties in well with our CTE. Trade schools will increase and meet labor demand and automation across the country. So how appropriate. Here we are in Roanoke with a CTE school under construction that will be opened late next year. Artificial intelligence will drive new emerging industries, clusters. New careers will be created, and no one even knows what some of those careers are going to be. But what a powerful tool and something for us to look forward to. Site readiness shortens times to startup, which we all knew, but it just means everyone should, to the extent possible, have those available. Roads and infrastructure. Now, here's one, traffic lights for industrial Traffic lights for industrial sites and heavy corridors needs to be a priority because otherwise it could stymie the growth of the industrial park. And also, listen to this. We've got to do a better job, briefly, retaining folks 18 to 26. If we don't, we're going to lose them, and our aging population will continue to age. And Supervisor Hooker and I heard that yesterday at the VBR Regional Partnership Discussion. Localities are encouraged to purchase new sites. Maybe localities should work with other localities and go in jointly like we did at the Woodhaven Site. And lastly, increase advertisement outside of our region that sell the benefits of our region to attract talent, to show off our quality of life, and talk about great places to live and move to and work in to raise a family, and also to admire all of the outdoor activities we have. So these are just some things that were mentioned to all of us from different people from all over the country. It was very rewarding. Even though I had to get up and be there by 7:30 in the morning, it was well worth the time. And I noticed that Mr. Kaywood also was in attendance.
Did they give you breakfast?
They did. But I'd already eaten breakfast, and I didn't need to eat anymore. Lastly, I want to thank all staff who worked on lot drainage rules and ordinances over the last two or three years to improve the process for our community. That was also on the consent agenda today, and there'll be more going forward in the next couple of meetings on that. At this time, that's all I have.
I do have one more thing.